All right, I will call to order the meeting of Norberth Borough Council for today, March 3 at 7:32 PM. Mr. West, could you call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Fred Bush.
Here.
Muna Elshaks.
She's here, she waved.
I'll see her.
Rob McGreevy.
Here.
Michelle Pananopoulos.
Here.
Cindy Rickards.
Here.
Vice President Bob Weisbord.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Yes.
And President Aaron Miedrich.
President.
All right, I would like to recess this meeting into executive session. Members of the public and consultants not involved in the executive session will be moved to the waiting room. And then we will meet briefly and then come back to public session. Thank you.
Mr. President, would you like John Gallagher in on this also?
Yes, I would think.
Good.
Okay. Is that everybody, Matt?
That's everybody.
All right, our recording has begun. We're back in public session. And I have no comments for this evening, Ms. Mayor. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have a couple. One of them is wonderful. Keith Gallagher submitted his monthly report for February and for the first time in his history, being chief, and my history being mayor, and as far back as reporting has gone, we had zero crimes to report in the borough for the month of February. Typically, we have between eight and 14, you know, not major incidents, but whatever crimes are statistically listed on the crime reporting reports, and we had none, which is phenomenal. I think that's a real testament to the proactive stance of our officers, the way they proactively, you know, try and anticipate where things may be happening and take a look at it and the procedures that are in place. And I just want to congratulate the force on an amazing month. It was a confluence of a lot of lucky things come together, a storm, a couple storms, a couple of things happening, but boy, that's unprecedented, and it was really nice. And that is it.
Thank you. And Chief, thanks from the President's desk as well. I probably imagine that hasn't happened in your career, so it's a nice thing to see.
Thank you.
We'll move to 6A subdivisions. I believe we have, Mr. West, a second subdivision to discuss also. Is it 230 Dudley? I saw an email come around.
No, that's not on tonight's agenda. That was just moved from, the process has just begun for that one. So this is, tonight, we have, we have the applicants' representatives here, and the engineer, Chris Yon, he wanted to present on the subdivision application for 32 Sabine Avenue. And so this is what I would like going forward for business processes. Planning Commission listened to it last night and made a recommendation. And going forward, I would like to see work sessions have a presentation by these applicants after they've been to the Planning Commission, and this is merely for informational purposes. I don't, I'm not a fan of council making any, taking any action in a work session without the solicitor present. And really, you know, I envision this meeting to be more informational, more educational, and more interactive. And so we've asked, and I'd like this going forward with all of these other land developments that are coming through also, and to really utilize this work session as the, is the platform for the applicants to present their applications. So tonight, we've got 32 Sabine Avenue, and as I said, Chris Yon from Yon Engineering is here representing the applicant.
Hey, Chris, the floor is yours.
Thank you. If I could, I'm going to share my screen, and I will present the plan. I'll try to do it in about five minutes or so, and then if anyone has any questions, you can let me know. I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
So the property address is 32 Sabine Avenue. That is right here in the center of the screen, on the running up and down, and north to south is Sabine Avenue on the left, and along the top of the screen is Conway Avenue, running east to west. So right now, this property, it's a rectangular property. It has an existing triplex on it with three garage doors in the back, a parking area that is accessed from a common driveway that goes through these two properties to the south, and I believe it comes off of Country Lane or Country Road. And so that common driveway comes up here. That's access to the rear garages. All of those features are proposed to be removed, and what the applicant is proposing is a twin building. And so it's one building. Each half of the twin has a unit, and so we're going down from the three units currently down to two. And so each of these units would have a two-car garage in the rear that is also accessed from the existing common driveway. The lot slopes from front to back, and here's a grade in the front of 318, and in the rear, it's down to 304. So these garages will be on the lower level of the building. The first floor will be up here facing the street, and the garages will be on the lower level. These decks will come off of the first floor level, so they'll be above the parking area. The creation of the twin building has a property line down the center to separate the two buildings. And there is a section in the code that talks about a general proportion being 2.5 to one. I think that was meant a little bit more for a single-family lot that is wider. These twin lots are typically narrower lots, and so they are longer and typically do exceed the that two and a half to one. And in fact, the typical the typical, or the minimum dimension for a lot is 25 feet wide with a minimum lot area of 3,000. And so if you take that 3,000 square feet, you divide by the 25 feet wide, you end up with a lot length of 120 feet. And then if you take that 120 compared to the 25, you're at 4.8 to one as opposed to the code that suggests the 2.5. So I'd say this is an example where the subdivision code and the zoning code don't necessarily align. And that's somewhat consistent in other townships as well, where they have one general proportion, but it's really different for each code. So that's the one waiver we're asking for. Other than that, we do have review letters from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, from the Borough Zoning Officer and from the Borough Engineer. And when we presented to the Planning Commission on Monday night, we, you know, basically said those were all will comply items with the exception of this one requested waiver that the town's engineer noted. If I could quickly, just with the, this rectangle in the back, in the back is what we are anticipating for an underground stormwater management system with an overflow in the rear. One of the comments from the tent Borough Engineer was to see if we could pull that spreader back from the property line a little further to give the overflow a little, a chance to flow over the property a little further before it, it went past the property. That was one of the items for discussion. The other was really the common driveway. The applicant has reached out to the adjacent property owner to discuss the easement and you know, what, what will be expected, I guess, during construction and after. There are two beech trees that the county noted, or a beech tree and a pine tree here that are fairly close to existing driveway that they asked that we, you know, do a little further investigation on, on those. You know, certainly everyone wants to keep the trees, but given their proximity to the driveway, you know, is there any extra protection they might need or tree trimming? Or do they hurt the site distance at all that maybe they need some reflectors or something? So that was most of what we talked about in a five-minute explanation. We did get a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission for the plan and the waiver. And I believe Mr. Resty sent his, his summary to the board earlier today. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that, that council might have.
All right, council members, I'll try to see you if you have your hands raised. Mr. Bush.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still concerned about the narrowness of the lot. Now, I know that you say that code allows for up to 4.8 to one, but I went looking at a lot of the twins in Norbert and I found one that was four to one, but I didn't find anything that was more than that. Are you aware of any Norbert properties that are currently, I believe this, this proposed is six to one, the, the width to depth? Are you aware of any Norbert properties that are, that are a similar narrowness?
So one of the lots is 5.2 to one, the other one's 5.6 to one. I have not searched the rest of the borough to see what other properties are. I do know that many of the smaller, or the twin houses in the borough oftentimes are on lots that don't comply with the 3,000 square feet. And so, you know, had they complied with the 3,000, I think they likely would exceed the threshold, but that is something I could, I could look into.
What is the advantage to the homeowner of this being split into two narrow lots versus it remaining one lot? Like a duplex or a triplex, which is what it currently is?
I think generally, and you know, I guess I, I should say, this is what developers and builders tell me. I don't have the firsthand knowledge of it. But I also hear the same thing from real estate professionals that think generally people would like to purchase their own home on their own lot. I think they feel more like they, they have the rights to something. They don't have to share it with someone else. And so if you built this building and didn't have the lot line, then you would, you know, have both of these walkways would be on the overall lot. And I think that the preference is to have your own. Now, certainly there would have to be an agreement for the shared parking in the rear and the stormwater management system. But I think as, as much as possible, people like to have you know, their, their own home and not have it be as restrictive as most that would be on one property and be, you know, the homeowner association and have both people agree to certain changes.
I guess I'm skeptical because this lot already is narrower than the two and a half to one that's recommended in our, in our guide and in our, in our code. And, you know, you're asking to chop it up, whereas there's already, you know, it's already a triplex. So clearly, I think a duplex would be viable on this lot. So I, I'm skeptical about the proposal to chop up the lot. So I'll let other people speak.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I just have, I have one sort of subjective question, Chris, and one specific question. How often do you see, say, a triplex be replaced, replaced by a duplex in your, in your work? I mean, you know, in other words, to see the number go down, the number of residential units go down.
Yeah, it's not often. It does happen rarely when, you know, the existing building is, is undersized or, you know, in really poor condition. But yeah, not often. Typically, typically builders or developers are looking for every unit they can get.
Okay, second question. Does this, does the stormwater management of this development improve upon the existing stormwater, water conditions?
Well, as far as I know, there's no stormwater management there now. And so the, you know, the, the new stormwater management system will be proposed to meet code in terms of the rate control, which requires a reduction in the two through 100-year storm and the volume controls that require reduction for the two-year storm.
And you're, in your opinion, will it perform as well or better than the current, than the existing condition?
So we didn't get into the calculations yet for me to, you know, tell you that definitively. I'll say that most codes are are written, including Norbert, where they are, the requirements are more stringent for, well, let's put it this way, there's design storms from the one year, the two-year, five-year, 10, 25, 50 and 100-year storms. Theoretically, a 100-year storm happens once every 100 years. Obviously, there's data on that, you know, sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. Same way that if you go to play roulette, you don't get, you know, 50% red or 50% black. You might get a few in a row sometimes. But essentially, the codes are written to focus in terms of rate control, that there'll be a reduction all the way up to the 100 or to the 100-year storm. For volume control, are focused more on the smaller storm events, and so only up to the two-year storm. So there will be a great reduction in those smaller storm events in terms of volume. Rate control goes all the way up to 100.
Okay, thanks so much, Chris.
All right, any other council members? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much for your proposal. And we look forward to finding out more as this project progresses.
I would just say that now I would recommend that this be put on the agenda for March 17th for the potential approval of tentative sketch plan.
Okay. All right, no problem there. And let's move to agenda item seven. And Mr. Kergisi, you're here.
I am. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to our meeting.
Absolutely.
We have invited you to give us some information about the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission and what our options might be as it relates to I would say a broad stroke historic preservation in the borough of some of our architecture, but also preservation of, you know, under increasing economic pressures, how we might preserve the, the character of our neighborhood.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I am Corey Cagorice, the Community Preservation Coordinator for Eastern Pennsylvania at the State Historic Preservation Office. So that is a division of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. You might know us from the blue and gold history on a stick markers. I think you've got a, a couple on Haverford Avenue. But among other things that are, my office does is extensive work with local governments and on planning and policy issues, including the work I've been doing with Norbert for the last four years or so on trying to identify some policy tools that you can use to do as, as President, the President indicated to preserve the distinctive character, architecture and culture of, of the borough. Just for those of you who I haven't had an opportunity to meet in the past, and I've met with several of you before. I live in, in Germantown and I work in Fort Washington, so I am local. I've been to Norbert many times. I find it to be a really, a really enduring community and I'm glad to have the opportunity. My experience in other communities and in Norbert in the past has told me that I, these conversations around this topic tend to inspire a lot of questions and conversation. So I opted not to put together any visuals or slides for, for tonight, but rather to share a couple of thoughts and observations based on what I anticipate. Some of you may want to be talking about, and then I thought I would leave it open for your questions and we can go from there. So I got, I got started with Norbert back in 2017, which was right around the time when the Form-based code was nearing completion, but had not yet been adopted. And the Elmwood Church project was sort of front and center in everyone's minds. And I began a conversation with several council members, members of the Planning Commission and others about how the, the borough, what the borough could do to address what were going to be some known gaps in that form-based code. And I will say that the, the code, the, the Form-based zoning that you have implemented is quite progressive, unique. Many of you will probably say not perfect. Probably nothing ever can be, but it was, it is at the, it was at the time and I think remains a real model statewide in terms of the kinds of development practices or policies that communities can put in place to address a lot of the character-defining issues that come with new construction, character retention issues that come with new construction. Zoning, in my experience, is where the heavy lifting of historic preservation gets done. It's not a sort of a well, I think, understood dynamic, but the, the factors that zoning codes like that influence when it comes to existing buildings, new buildings in existing communities and other aspects of land development. That's really where you can have a, you can, you can address a lot of substantive policy issues, but it doesn't do everything. And I think what the crafters of the code knew going into that was that it wasn't going to deal very well with the with providing tools that would encourage the retention of the existing building stock or even how some of the more distinctive features of your existing community might, might be retained or preserved. What it does do, as I see Dave Rower's name here, he told me one day, said, "We started this code because some of us on the Planning Commission woke up one day and realized that if a tornado roared down Haverford Avenue, our zoning code would force us to build back 1960 strip malls." Said, "Nobody wanted that." So your, your code was really meant to address what the, what future Norbert would look like and ensure that it looked familiar to the people, to, to current residents. But as I said, it didn't, it was not designed to do much to encourage the retention of the existing fabric. So the, over the next several years, myself, my, my colleague Kathleen Alpenap from the Lower American Conservancy and another of other folks on the Planning Commission and a specially appointed committee began work to try and figure out what exactly it was, what was the missing piece for Norbert? What, what did you need that missing 10%, you know, sort of policy to, to do that would complement and not overlap with or overly complicate the zoning code that you had so carefully constructed? And, and then what were the right sort of mechanisms to make that happen? So the, the conclusions we reached at that, at that time, and I think have been moving, the, the Planning Commission Council's direction has been working to try and put in writing and give you something that you can actually take action on. The, the main issues that sort of bubbled up from there were, one, giving you a tool to manage demolition. And two, think about ways to manage sort of major alterations to character-defining features. Preservation ordinances are at their sort of highest level. Tools that let you manage the, the rate and the, the nature of change. So how fast your community changes and in what ways? And they should, they're really effective. That's sort of the beginning of a in, in terms of determining whether a building stands or falls. And maybe at the end, in, in, in term, in terms of how it gets altered or may, maybe physically changed. And then the kind of pieces in the middle about how it uses, how it's used and what all this sort of attendant features to that parking surface area, you know, setback, then cover things like that, use are all, that's where your, that's where your zoning code really becomes a, a major factor. So what I heard over and over again during that, the development of that Heritage Action Plan and subsequently is concern over the lack of a tool to, to intervene in, in the demolition phase. So there's, and, and that's where an ordinance really becomes a useful, a useful tool. It creates an intervention point for a community, the community to make a decision about whether preservation and retention of an existing building is in line with the, the goals and the policies that you've adopted or should be allowed to proceed and, and, and then your other codes kick in to determine that some, you know, how the replacement or the development of that, of that, of that property may, may occur going forward. So think of this as sort of an, a reservation tool as a, as an intervention point for you to make some decisions about what, whether something changes and in what ways. What a the thinking that has evolved on, on preservation ordinances over the last several years, but you know, but the trend has been sort of shifting this way for the last 10 to 15 is they should be, they can and should be tailored to meet the, the community-specific goals and needs. And that's not something you're going to, you may not typically associate with, with an ordinance like this, meaning that they don't need to cover every nut and bolt and stick of a, of a property, but they can be addressed and tailored in a way that really suits the community's temperament and political will, as well as its sort of physical and developmental needs. So in some places that's dealing just with demolition and some places that's dealing with all of the nuts and bolts and windows and and shutters and somewhere, some communities, it's kind of in between. And the conclusion that I came away from the development of the action plan with is that I think you you've got this really comprehensive tool in your Form Based Code already, and the the trick for Narberth is trying to tailor a policy that, again, complements and does not replace or overlap significantly with what you've already spent so much time and effort creating. And then that's the, you know, that gives you a a more complete tool, tool chest to address how your community might change. So while ordinances like this are you know, focused on physical places and spaces and buildings, those spaces have significance to a community for any number of reasons. Some people will value them because they are aesthetically pleasing. Some people will value them because it is familiar and has a certain patina or character to them that seems very comforting and 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 known. The community's significance really have may lie in the sort of social and cultural history that is you know, embedded in those places. You know, Narberth has this incredible legacy as a as a working class neighborhood on the main line. And that is reflected in the the building stock that you've got there. I mean, this is a community that is characterized by lovely, but you know, human scale architecture and homes with really nice, you know, really lovely set of commercial buildings to support that community. So while you have a few really kind of knockout standout gems that everybody would sort of, I think, put on a list and say, this is the, this is the nicest building in town. Not everybody have the same building, but you know, I think you could probably put whittle down a list and say, that's the, those are the handsome places. Collectively, your residential and civic and and commercial architecture all create this character and this tell the story of a place that has evolved over the last, you know, century and a half to be this really unique, again, working class community in a an otherwise, you know, the, you know, in the Philadelphia may line. So it's not only about, is it pretty? Is it aesthetically pleasing, but really about trying to understand what the what the character and the spaces and the features are that 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 tell that story and and define that character? And and then trying to find a way to let those processes play out, but in a more deliberate and kind of managed way. Right now, I think, as you've probably experienced in, you know, in in the recent past, a a building can be taken down and replaced with something much bigger and 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 more expensive, and that has implications for who who lives there, the the composition of your, of your community, the character of your community. So while we are talking about, you know, preservation of buildings and spaces that are historically associated, you know, I don't want to sell, try and you know, convince anybody that this isn't something that's going to affect your, your current and future town, you know, community as well. And and it has these preservation has utility in in that regard, too. So I know that affordable housing and diversity of housing, and one of the things that I heard over and over again during that development of the action plan that people really valued about Narberth is the the diversity of the community in its broadest sense of the word, and that comes from associate, different socioeconomic backgrounds, racial, ethnic, gender, you know, all of the, all of the cat, all of the things, you know, Narberth has this incredible mixture of and and diversity, and some of that diversity is supported by the kinds of housing that you that you provide there. So older housing of the kind that you find in in, and that we we might identify as being historically associated with those themes can serve an important role in providing kind of the the attainable middle at at times. And so a a preservation tool, you know, does an additional duty of helping to preserve a diversity of housing stock that might be attractive to a a range or a type of of owner or residence that helps to create that diversity for for your community. So you know, there's a if it sounds like we're trying to sort of make something do a lot of things, it's true. And it's not an easy process. Otherwise, we probably would have had this figured out a couple of years ago. But I think you're at a moment now where this conversation is and coming to a head and a lot of time and thought has been, has been invested in trying to figure out what the best tool is. And so I I hope that there's a there's a future for for this whole discussion going forward. So I'm going to stop there, take a drink of water and let you ask me questions.
Thank you. And I'd just like to ask Todd for a moment if he could sort of put a different lens on it, which is, I know the Planning Commission has had some conversations. Kind of bring it down to our level, Todd, where where are things right now? Help counselors understand the kinds of decision they may be looking to make in terms of giving the Planning Commission direction and in moving forward in this.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thanks for the opportunity to have this conversation tonight. Mr. President.
My pleasure.
We the the borough asked Corey's office in the Lower Merion Conservancy and a citizen committee, I think back in twenty eighteen, to begin to look at these issues. And in twenty nineteen, that group delivered to the Borough and to the Planning Commission what was called a Heritage Action Plan, Heritage Action Study, I guess, and it had several major recommendations in it. And I think we finally accepted it in September of twenty nineteen. The Planning Commission then reviewed it and issued a report to council in twenty, in January of twenty twenty. Seems a long time ago. And in that, in that report, we made recommendations to council as to what we thought a good path would be for Narberth. We we recognized many of the same issues Corey raised. We also recognized the, and since the increasing trend towards more demolitions of 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 buildings, and that's really driven a lot by the economics we're seeing right now of house prices and 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 the the development that can occur. Those, those recommendations were largely that the Borough consider an ordinance that focused on, as Corey says, managing managing demolitions, managing, taking a closer look at the design of new construction, and also may, looking at major alterations, which we gave examples such as an addition to a, to a, to a house, the removal of turret, you know, some of our houses have these lovely turrets, you know, defining features like that, that if they weren't there, we would know something, something had really changed in Narberth. And that we requested councils you know, support for moving ahead and beginning to suss out what, what what kinds of tools we would actually need to do to do that, what kind of ordinances would we need, and what kind of administrative processes and so forth. We put that on pause for a while, partly we were all, you know, preoccupied with what happened exactly a year ago, and we've, we've pulled through. Hopefully, most of us have pulled through at least. And we also were, were prioritizing the work on updating our subdivision and land development ordinance, which is still proceeding. But as these, these applications kept coming to us more rapidly last fall, we were asked to continue continue that work. So we're at the point now where we, and and we were also waiting for Corey's office, which actually was, was trying to provide more contemporary updated guidance to communities like ours. And so they were developing tools we could use to make our job easier and help us find that path. That all came together late last year, last fall. And the Planning Commission has been, at every other month, we devote a considerable amount about, a considerable amount of our meeting to talking about how to approach this. And we are just about the point now where we have taken the materials that Corey's office has prepared and are closing in on a draft of an ordinance that we would like to give to council. We're also consulting with Matt and his office and have have more work to do there. Here are the questions, Aaron, that I think any public official would want to ask. One is, what's the policy reason for this? Why, why are we doing it? And I think Corey gave some answers to that. We've been talking about the Planning Commission. The second is what are the kinds of things we're talking about doing or include, you know, what are the kinds of activities that a a preservation ordinance would 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 recover? And that's really where the core of our discussions is, and I still think it pretty much centers around what I said earlier, major changes like, like demolitions of of buildings, major, you know, additions to buildings and and the alteration or removal of 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 major features. I I think we don't think that the kinds of things homeowners do most of the time, like on Saturdays or hire contractors to do, like, you know, replacing windows or or painting your house or things like that. That's not really what we're thinking about. We're thinking more about these, these kind of features that 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 are more about the form and and shape of the building. And we're really only talking about features that are visible from a street, from the, from a street. So that's kind of what we're we're honing in on. And I think the decision for council is given the policy concerns, is that a reasonable response? And have we gotten it right in terms of what we think there's a public interest in and what we think we should just let private landowners do? And so there's there's that adjustment that that has to be, that has to be made. Another tool, by the way, is that in addition to having certain actions come through some sort of review process, there would also be guidelines that anyone could use for, for, for actions that don't go through the review process. So there might be guidance on how to repair windows or how to, you know, update your porch or something, something like that, that aren't rules, but simply information. And we've heard over and over again that homeowners sometimes just want information about, you know, about how to go about doing things. And then the third thing, the third decision that council would face is where do these rules apply? Do they apply everywhere in Norbert? Well, I think Corey hinted at the notion that this whole idea of preservation is really related around determining what's significant to a community and finding those areas where that is present, and then considering those to be the areas or the districts where this where these, the, these, these reviews would would take place. And an easy example to give you is English Village in Lower Merion is is a small historic district or Haverford Village around near the train station is a historic district. Gladwin Village is a historic district because there's a kind of coherence in those, those areas. So what is that area? And as, as Corey said, you know, as we've looked at it, we we've come to think that it's really that era of development in Narberth from the late nineteenth century up until just before or just after World War Two, which is really when most of the borough was built, most of what gives it its character. And what we, what would have to happen is there would have to be an assessment of the properties in those areas and a map drawn to show what those areas are. So the second, that's second, the next question for council is is the area we're talking about right? I mean, is it, is it really coherent? Does it make sense? Does it really reflect what the public says is the defining character of Narberth? And then finally, within that area, not every building is part of that story. There may be buildings where the original house got torn down and something else was built. And so there's a distinction made between buildings that contribute to that story and buildings that don't, what, what's in, what's out, and how they are treated differently. And so that would be the third, the, the, the next decision is, is and that is all developed. You know, we'll be working with the Lower Merion Conservancy to do that kind of work. So they sort of presented to council as a package to consider. So those are the key questions. What are the, you know, are you comfortable with the policy reasons for doing this? Are you comfortable with the policy response? Are you, do you believe that what is recommended to you really is related to spirit, the character of Narberth? The area under consideration, correct? So those, those would be the kind of questions, Aaron, that we would want to come back to council.
Yeah. So with hearing all of that, council members, questions? Andrea, you can unmute.
So the counter to this, and and I love the idea of preserving Narberth, our idea of what kind of Narberth is, but the counter to that is how does something like this affect property values?
I'll leave it open to either Corey or Todd to did we lose Corey?
I'm here, I'm here. I wish I I might have had an answer for that in the pre-COVID real estate market. I don't know exactly in the, you know, twenty twenty craze what what has happened, because I think everything is now, you know, higher. What we do know from studies and research done on areas designated as historic, historic districts in Pennsylvania and nationally is that generally property values are preserved or even slightly higher in those, in those areas than they are in, in, on similar similarly aged and form communities and other that are not, that do not have those designations. So I do think that, you know, it is somewhat regionally specific to, you know, whatever the the housing market is in a in a particular part of the country, but what we found again in in Pennsylvania is that it has not, it is only positive effects where there are, even where there are measurable effects.
Other questions?
Yeah, Corey, I just want to thank you so much for being here at the meeting with us tonight and presenting presenting your, the work that you've been doing, actually, since you were invited by the Building and Zoning Committee back in twenty seventeen, I think it was, Todd, when Bob Wiggbrad and I invited Corey to meet with with you and some of the other members of the Planning Commission to begin the process of defining how we might create a historic preservation task force. And I appreciate all the work that you've been doing in the intervening years, even when the Planning Commission came to us with the recommendations in January of twenty twenty, it actually seems like just a moment ago because we've had a lot to do this year as a small, tiny government dealing with the pandemic. Whole lot of new things happening. But I I just wanted to say briefly how much I appreciated your description, like putting the way you put words to what what Narberth is. I grew up here. This is the, the, you know, the, the landscape of my childhood and and, you know, we were, we were a working class community. This was like the streets were, were lined with trucks and, you know, people, people worked had had more jobs that they went to work with their tools and like my grandfather did and the the community had a kind of different feel. And and I would say that the the buildings that that from the founding of Narberth until World War Two do have created a kind of certain feel that the, it it sort of have created a very livable place. There, there, there is, I think we have to be really careful not to collapse sentimentality with, like, what makes something really important in the landscape of a place. So, for example, I'm like really sentimental that we lost the heart. So for example, I'm like really sentimental that we lost the hardware store. And I loved Rickland's and I loved the Riddells and I loved being there as a child and all of that. But the fact that the building's disappearing, as someone who is sentimental about the place, is, doesn't matter to me so much because I feel that the building that will replace it is going to actually create character for future generations. However, with that said, I'm really in favor of seeing us have tools to manage really unnecessary demolition of, of like good quality, small, modest scaled homes that, that really are being, that we're seeing disappear, serviceable houses that we're seeing disappear from the landscape for no reason other than the fact that like a builder can buy them and replace them with something that they can sell for more money. And that just seems like tremendously wasteful in some ways. But also like it does incrementally really shift the quality of the place that, I think you used the word human scale. So I do favor, I hope the council can find a way to support rules that will give us tools to manage, the borough tools to manage demolition. I also think that if, if preservation can help us manage the rate of change in some way, that I think that's a really good idea because we are seeing things change tremendously fast. I think in some really good ways, in addition to, and, and I think mostly in good ways. But there are examples that we see of things, of, of what I would call waste. And I, I think the third item that I'm not as certain about, and I'd like to hear what other council members think, has to do with managing alterations. Because I know that like some of my favorite places in the world are places that have been modified incrementally over time. And like there's something about small changes to even beautiful homes or buildings that kind of lend, kind of create even more character and of the kind that, you know, I think makes Norbert special. So there's kind of like little weird additions here and there that are kind of, you know, make things cool. And, and so if you sort of codify like some rules about, well, this was built at a certain time and like it really shouldn't be changed, well, maybe. And so I'm wondering how that actually would work, you know? Would there be an advisory committee or a board or something that might meet with the applicant and help them do it in a good way? But that, those are my comments. And again, I just want to express appreciation for all the work that the planning commission's done and that you've done with, with Kathleen as well.
Can I? Aaron, I think you're muted. I just wanted to see if I could get a response to, to Bob for, for just, just a second.
Sure.
Bob, I, I will say that Norbert has been my longest standing liaison in my, in my time at PHMC. I think I've, I've said the words Norbert and been to Mar- Norbert more than most of the other places in the 520 municipalities in my service area in the last 10 years. So.
In the club.
Yeah, I know, right? I just want to address your last point very quickly. So the, the tools that, that Todd referenced that I, you know, that my office has provided to sort of help model and craft an ordinance are, are based around sort of letting each part of the policy toolbox do its, do it, the right job. So the ordinance will identify the kinds of projects that require some level of review. And then there is an accompanying set of design guidelines that gets developed afterwards that say, and here's what you, here's what it would take for you to get approval under those, you know, for those activities. And that's an additional opportunity for the borough to, the community to say, here's how we would want those changes or alterations to be implemented. And that can be in a very liberal sort of light touch fashion or hew more closely to more traditional preservation practices, say, you know, you know, compatible styles and certain, and certain materials. So there's an, an additional opportunity to, for the, for the community to say, you know, just because we're requiring some level of review and approval for an addition or a, an enclosure of some, of some kind, it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be in some sort of phony, colonial, stuck in amber way. And then the last point on that is that there's a reason in the preservation worldwide they're referred to as guidelines and not regulations. So you have zoning regulations because zoning is a type of practice that lends itself to kind of ministerial actions. And I'm, this is going to get a little wonky here for just a second. But it's the kind of thing where you all can set some, some pretty clear regulations and give them to a staff person and say, implement these rules. And, you know, an example is you say setbacks need to be 10 feet. And a, and a, your zoning officer can say, sorry, your proposal's not 10 feet. So, you know, no. Preservation doesn't really lend itself to those kinds of things. It needs a little bit of humanity and, and discretion because no two buildings in any community are exactly the same and have lived the same life. And so you will need some degree of discretion exercised to identify what is the, what is the appropriate and sort of spirit of the, and the, whether that proposal meets the intent of, of the ordinance. I will, I will advocate to my dying day that for clarity though, because I think with property owners, what you as decision makers, what your advisory board appointed to, you know, sort of be in the intermediate here, what your staff will want is clarity around expectations so that there is little room for being taken advantage of and abuse of, of discretion, which I think can happen really easily in these scenarios. So I will, you know, counsel you all to be clear and intentional about what you want in this, this ordinance to do and the ways in which you want it to be done. So that, and then, and then provide the opportunities to sort of have relief from that so that you're not, you're not turning into the pretty committee, which this, that's not what this is about. This is not about somebody, a, a group of people elected or appointed or whatever, imposing a very particular aesthetic, some very subjective aesthetic notion. There needs to be some really kind of thoughtful guidelines that, that direct this work and the decisions.
Thank you. Cindy?
Thanks.
Corey, that was really helpful. And you actually affirmed my question, but then led me to a few more.
I have a way of doing that.
Well, it is, I mean, the devil is in the details and I'm really excited to see this. And Todd, I particularly like how you said, not every building is part of our story. And that's very much how I see the, the built environment and it, it being a significant part of Norbert's history. So assuming that we're, you know, we're in agreement on this policy and we're in agreement that buildings contribute, some buildings contribute to that story and history of Norbert and some it does not make sense to designate as part of that. I guess my question then goes into the devils really are in the details. So Corey, as you talk about, you know, we, we use tools that determine what is the preferred change or the alteration. Appreciate the conversation of a light touch versus, you know, Haddonfield, where you have to get your paint, house color paint approved. I don't think that's the, the will of this council by any stretch. But then how do you balance? Can you give me an example of how an ordinance would balance discretion versus aesthetics of a reviewer? And I, I can almost give an example of our block, our next door neighbor's house. We're both 1904. Our neighbor recently passed away and his son, who is a Mason himself, said, you know, this is going to be a really hard house to restore. It needs a tremendous amount of work. It's not a footprint of, of a modern family, meaning there's no closet on the first floor. There's no bathroom on the first floor. It would cost more to attempt to restore this than it would to tear it down. That makes sense to me. But if we're saying, okay, a part of our story starts from, you know, 1904, World War II, how do you then balance, can you give me an example then of how you would balance discretion and meeting the pol- the preservation policy versus what? And I love that idea of a pretty committee, of being at the mercy of the advisory board that says this, not that.
Well, you're not supposed to love the pretty committee, council. But I, I understand, I understand your point. So, you know, that, the question of, of, of balance, I think, you know, occurs in, in, in sort of two different arenas, based on what I was talking about. There is the sort of the, the demolition question. And then there's the sort of alteration question. And in some respects, the demolition question is kind of an easier one to answer. There are, I think by its very nature, a preservation ordinance intends preservation, right? I mean, that's the whole point. But that's not without, that, that's not sort of an, an unwavering absolute. So there, there are, there are, I would say relief valves, but there are conditions that can be defined in, in, in an ordinance as to when demolition may be considered acceptable. I don't know what, what, what are those circumstances? So the one that you, the example that you gave about the, the cost to rehabilitate versus, versus demolish. One of the, one of the kind of bedrock principles that needs to be included in ordinance like this is opportunities for an owner to claim economic hardship. That does not, that's a, that's a constitutional issue. That goes back to several state Supreme Court and US Supreme Court cases. That kind of has to be allowed there so that you don't get accused of regulatory takings. But the way that hardship, you know, you get typically gets thought of in these contexts is it's property specific. It's not applicant specific. So something costs more, something costing more and somebody not wanting to pay that may, may not meet the legal standard for, for hardship. But in a situation where a property is, has deteriorated to a point where it requires a, a level of investment that would never be recouped by the sale, you all will have a, a tool at your disposal and a, and a process at your disposal to, to make that decision and say, okay, we're, we're, we're okay with that. You know, that, that building can be demolished because this, this test has been, you know, has been met. So in, in the policy setting stage of this and the ordinance writing, you'll have the ability to, to say, what are the circumstances and the tests that you want to be met in order for that change to be allowed, you know? In the alterations arena, it's a little, it's a little more nebulous to, to define. But what, what I was, you know, saying to Bob was, you know, and, and you all about the guidelines. The far too community, far too few communities actually have usable and legible design guidelines that actually help them in their decision-making process. So the crafting guidelines in a way that is, is thoughtful, that, that communicates the level of discretion that you're all willing to accept or sort of deviation or sort of the range of options that you're all willing to accept is going to be really important. I'll give you just one quick example. This may not be something that ever makes it on your, you know, your checklist, but roof materials is something that's traditionally part of what, you know, the scope of, 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 or traditional, of traditional historic districts, for example. When you're writing, when it comes time to write in Arbor's historic district design guidelines, the question you want to ask yourself, and assuming roof materials on the list is, how much do you care about the roof material? Do you care a lot? Or do you care, you know, not very much? Because if you care a lot, your policy statement might, you know, suggest retaining historic roof materials, repairing them at all costs and replacement only with the, you know, the, the same historic material. If your answer is we, we don't care about that very much, then you might allow any new roofing material so long as it is of a similar, you know, texture and, and scale. So you don't want to replace a slate roof with, you know, metal, corrugated metal. You know, like that might be a ma- like a, like a major shift. You'll probably land somewhere in the middle and, and try and find some, some language that says, you can take the slate roof off as long as you put on some kind of shingle that is reasonably similar. You know, and, and that might be the place you go.
So can I take a step back, back to our first principles? Because we're getting, can you hear me? Aaron, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm watching the clock here. Fred's had his hand up. Can I?
Ah, so have I. Okay, that's.
Oh, I didn't. Okay. Go Fred and then Michelle. And then I am watching the clock here.
Okay. So I have a, I have a question about implementation. What would this look like if you're going to make an alteration? So you're in the borough, you're in, your house has been declared contributing. And you decide you need to make a change to your porch or something that's contributing. What does it look like from the homeowner's end? And then one more question after this. So it's probably for Todd, since he's working on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Todd, do you want that question?
Well, you would, I guess one of the first questions is whether what you are proposing to do would require a building permit or not.
So let's say you're making a significant change that requires a permit. You know, it's not a demo. It's not a complete renovation. It's one, one aspect that you're changing to the house.
If you're, if you're doing a building, if you're creating, if you're undertaking an alteration that requires a building permit, you would have the borough, the, the borough building officer look at your application and say, well, you are doing something under a preservation code, requires you to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. And therefore you have to submit your plans for this and it would be reviewed by a, a, a board to look at your plans and determine whether or not you know you're meeting our guidelines and whether or not you should be aware of that, that certificate. And you would need to get that certificate of appropriateness before you obtain your building permit. Now, what I'm not prepared to tell you right now, because this is something we have to build, work out with the borough staff and the borough zoning officer, is that this has to work within, you know, mandated timeframes for these sorts of approvals to occur. And so I, I know that some of our planning commission members have actually begun to develop a flow chart to kind of look at those steps. And we have talked, we've had one conversation with the borough staff about it, but we need to continue working out the procedure. If you were not, if you, if you're, the alteration you were proposing did not require a building permit, you would have to go to the borough office and, and, and submit something to the building officer so that they could determine whether or not you required a certificate of, of appropriateness. They might say yes, they might say no. So that if you were undertaking an alteration that was not requiring a building permit, you, you would have that step of having to get a, a certificate as well.
So it fits within the current timeline of issue, of the borough issuing a permit? Is that what you're saying? That it wouldn't create a new timeline? It would fit within something we've already got by state law?
It, whatever process is established would need to conform to whatever state or borough timeframes for the processing of applications exists already.
Okay. All right.
Those are. The other thing though, Fred, to be, to be clear, the, the board that reviews these things would only be making recommendations and those recommendations would go to the, correct me if I'm wrong, Corey, would go to the, the borough council for approval.
Okay.
Another.
Thanks, Todd.
Can I jump in now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one statement to make, which is that our, our climate action plan also specifically mentions that we need to make sure that any heritage action or any, any, you know, any plan in this direction does not limit our ability to, you know, to pass climate bills. So I, I think we need to keep in mind, you know, energy efficiency adjustments as we, as we, you know, put in exceptions to this, that, you know, if you're going to put in solar panels on your roof, that might be a valid change, even in a historic house. It's a statement. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. What?
I don't see any inconsistencies there, by the way. I mean.
Thank you so much, Corey, for being here. It's good to see you again. So I just want to go back to first principles again in terms of, because we're, when we have these discussions, we always wind up sort of conflating multiple things because sort of wind up conflating, what will the standards be and how liberally? And how liberally or strictly will they be applied versus what gets reviewed in the first place? And why? So I think something I want to just put on the table so everybody in council is aware of it. In addition to the fact that yes, council will have to review issuance or denial of certificate of appropriateness. The Historic District Act requires the Historic Architecture Review Board to be composed of five people, which will need to appoint a minimum of five, and that will have to contain one licensed real estate broker, not agent broker, and a building inspector. That's in the Historic District Act. So that is something council is going to need to always have that board filled up. And I asked Corey about this and he said that most, most communities use their building inspector or the building inspector, because they're unlikely to find a volunteer building inspector from the community readily. I think the thing to remember is that means that we will be paying our building inspector for every hour spent in meetings reviewing projects that have been submitted for certificates of appropriateness. And if that is a cost that's going to be, need to be passed on to everybody through our permitting program, because it's going to increase the cost of permits. And so I think that it really behooves us to be very careful about what we put into the HARB slash certificate of appropriateness, sort of piece of preservation be really, I think that we will be much more likely to find support in the community and on this council if we limit that level of regulatory authority to demolitions and removal of significant existing historic features such as turrets, you know, erasure of things that you can't get back. And I don't want that to mean though, that our planning commission and heritage action group that put so much time into this have to sacrifice the ability to have an intervention point for other items, right? Such as major alterations to character defining features, as you put it, Corey, or additions, third floor dormers, other kinds of expansions to usable space that are visible from the front. I think your example of roofing is a great one, Corey. How many people who have replaced their slate roofs found out later, oh, my roofer never told me that slate roof actually can last forever. There are people who do this work and it actually adds, did might add to the value of my house. I think having in place an advisory board separately composed, not the HARB, right? Maybe some, maybe some overlap, but maybe under our zoning code, something that is part of our permit plant process, right? That says this other category of work, of permitted work, not demolitions, not removal of turrets, those kinds of things that we want people to have to show they have a hardship to do those things. Those things are, are right. Like we don't need to worry about discretion so much or, you know, having a light touch, because I think we all pretty much are on the same page that we would like the hard, the, the firmest protection as possible for those projects. But you take the rest of the projects that don't rise to that level. And rather than just saying, well, I guess we can't do anything about them. Or well, we'll give, we'll give somebody a printed sheet that we think about. And this could be a separate ordinance, by the way, it doesn't probably have to go together with the, the, the creation of the historic district and the initial setting up of the HARB. That we find a way to create an advisory board that is part of the permit process, that those projects that come in for permits that might involve, say, oh, adding third floor dormers or something, you know? They're required to go to a meeting with this advisory board who might say, you know, we see why your builder is doing it this way, but have you considered this? Look at this other house and the way that this restoration worked more nicely. So we, we give people advice that they, in many cases would probably be grateful for and may lead to better projects. And it's, and you have to go to that meeting and check the box off. But if you decide to do it your own way, you can still do it. And it, I think that that's going to be that kind of an approach that bifurcates this so that we're not saying, we're going to dump everything in the HARB, but then we're going to make these great design guidelines and say, go easy, use your discretion, use a light touch. Don't worry, don't worry, they're not going to tell you. I think the problem is not only does that rely on the discretion of a board that, that is going to go into the future for a long time, but again, it triggers a, a pretty administratively burdensome process. So if there is a way to withdraw a lot of these non-eraser type, non-demolition type of projects from that, that certificate of appropriateness process and put them into a mandatory advisory review process. You have to sort of sit down and get some, get some good guidance before you can move on with your permit. I think that's a, that's, that's a process that might work better for this borough.
So Michelle, I just want to bounce in here for a second. It seems to me like you're describing sort of chunks and sort of chunking this apart. And I'm just wondering if you can just sort of reiterate what you said, just as sort of the basic bits, like, you know, yes, we would have the HARB district, I mean, the district, yes, we would have the HARB. And then you're saying that, yes, there would be a, a board, but the board would have like sort of be limited to, you said, like limited just to teardowns?
No.
Anyway, can you just restate that again?
No, I mean, I think that the HARB, a HARB, it's, it's a legally defined entity under the Historic District Act. And the HARB will issue or decline to issue a certificate of appropriateness as part of its review process for any properties that we designate as historic. And under whatever guidelines that, you know, the planning commission has recommended and that we choose to put within it, right? So they'll have a sort of mandatory authority with subject to council review, council can overturn, overturn that, that recommendation. But that, that's a fairly administratively complicated and burdensome process. Not only does it require council review, but it is again, as I said, it requires us to pay our building inspector and that is likely to increase permit fees overall. And I also think it will likely displease the residents to be required to sit and improve a project is worthy of a certificate of appropriateness when it may be something like putting a dormer in on the third floor that if, yeah. And so I think that we would be serving ourselves and the community well, if we would not put those kinds of projects within the HARB's mandatory sort of regulatory authority. But I'm, I'd hate to give up on it entirely because I know that a lot of work has been put into this. And so I would suggest creating a parallel process that allows us to have an intervention point during the permitting process that would, that would be an advisory process, right? It doesn't need to be reviewed by council. It doesn't need to have a building inspector sitting on the committee. It, it's, it's a, it's a dialogue, it's an advisory process. It requires getting a form filled out and checking a box that you did it, right? But it would give the planning commission and preservationists in our community an intervention point to improve those projects, but wouldn't require an ultimate determination by council, basically to say, yes, you get your certificate of appropriateness for this dormer or no, you don't.
And Michelle, that would include developing some of those design documents, right? So that when you sit down with someone, you can, you can show them what you, right? You could show them, your house is, is this era, it's this style. And this is sort of the way, the direction that we're advising that you go for this smaller project. Is that what you're saying?
I would think that, that, that that's, I mean, that's something I think that developing the details of that would be better put in the hands of Todd and Corey and the planning commission and, and folks who know historic preservation. I'm suggesting that as an alternative, because I don't want to see so much, I don't want to see an ordinance come that has so many guidelines and so many potential projects that will be derailed into a, into a mandatory process where they are required to obtain certificates of appropriateness that we end up not passing it. So I think if there's a way that we can bifurcate the process and reserve the more heavy-handed regulatory, yes, you get your certificate of appropriateness, no, you don't. For those projects where we really have broad agreement, not only in this council, but I think community wide, that we don't want to see perfectly salable small houses being predatorially demolished under place. We don't want to see the loss of significant existing historical features. I think if we could reserve the, those powers for those projects and find another way to manage preservation outside of that process in the advisory, that's sort of a parallel advisory process. I think it's something that would be worth exploring.
So Corey or Todd, is there a way that we can restrict the HARB to really be a protection against demolition rather than a protection against, you know, improvements and enhancements to a home? Is that, is that a square peg in a round hole?
No, I mean, in fact, what, what we were, spent a lot of time at the planning commission working on Monday was that very question, Michelle. What things would we feel would require the oversight of a HARB? And what are the things that would, would simply be handled on more of an advisory basis, right? And, you know, Corey's tools include a whole chart of like a hundred things, you know? And you, you, you check the box and you say, oh, this one requires a HARB and this one, no, this get advisory or this one don't even bother for that matter. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen that. I think that's great. I just, I want to, I mean, I wanted to make sure, because I haven't heard a lot of talk about advisory. And I wanted to make sure that you were pursuing that. And I, I didn't want to take up any more time. I just want to urge you to sort of, you know, consider that, because I want to make sure that this receives the support that it deserves.
The answer is yes, Aaron, and it's super transparent. It's, it's really a chart you can look at and say, ah, they, they checked the box in the wrong place. We need to move that over more. So, and that's what we would bring to you.
I'll, I'll, I'll say, I'll say two things. So I did get a, a report out from the, the planning commission meeting on Monday from Todd and your, your county planner. And so I do have some, particularly around this, what does or does not, you know, what, what it would constitute a or require this more advisory review than as opposed to an approval. So I'm off, I'm going to follow up with him offline. The, there's, there's two things I would say about council's role in this as well as this sort of administrative, the, the staff involvement and two sort of tips I'd give you. So one of the, in, in the guidance that I, I provided to the planning commission, I think that they're working from. There is a, the concept for, let's say that your list of things that require reviews and COAs is, has 10 items on it. You might be able to pick five of those things that are, that can be more readily quantified or sort of narrowly defined and, and turned into with some, some more reasonable parameters. It means you, you, you don't want to totally give up the review requirement, but you want to give some more, you know, concrete guidance. And those are the kinds of things that you can actually, through this process, basically delegate down to a staff person, a, a building inspector or, or other borough staff to say, issue those COAs over the counter, that if, as long as your project meets these, you know, fits within these narrow parameters, we're going to go ahead and, and sign off on that, you know, right, right here and now. And then you, it kind of comes back to council for sort of a perfunctory rubber stamp after the, after the fact. So there is sort of a tool built in, a mechanism built into it to allow for an intervention point, but a streamlined approval process that sort of takes the, the burden of time and effort off of the property owner as well as makes a little bit more streamlined for you all. For the things that do come to council, I'm going to give you, again, a nickel's worth of free advice. Put your HARB action, your, or your commission, whatever you're going to call them, action items in a, in a consent agenda. Approve them all as a, as a lump and pull out only the ones that you think really merit some level of, you know, discretion and discussion by, by this body. You have a lot of really important work to do. Meddling over every certificate of appropriateness that might come before you is not probably high on that list. So I would say if you invest the time in crafting the ordinance and, and guidelines and, and making the right sort of appointments, trustee appointments to those review boards, I think you should have the ability to take those recommendations in a, in a consent agenda format that would free up your time, but still fulfill the legal mandate.
Okay, thank you, Corey.
Thank you. I, I will just follow up one thing. I feel that if we are generating more than a few dozen certificates of appropriateness in a year, we haven't set this up right.
You might be right.
All right, we will move on to our next agenda item. This was a good informational discussion. Mr. West, could you give us some information? You have to, two different discussions about streetlights.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First one, I just wanted to give a quick update on the LED streetlight project. I did coordinate with my representative at PICO that our updated, much more cost-effective application to purchase our streetlight inventory is on the PUC's desk. We're hoping in the next couple of weeks that that will get approved. Once that gets approved, it will then go into ordering the materials and construction. So hopefully in the next month or two, we will see all of our streetlights owned by the borough and replaced with LED streetlights. The second thing, I'm going to start calling, I'm going to subtitle tonight's meeting and call it complicated issues. I know I should have a laugh track on that one. Downtown streetlights. Thank you, thank you. I wanted to bring this issue to council's attention. It's been a couple of months that we, an issue was brought to our attention and it's to the point where council needs to know about it because it's going to result in real money being spent to invest in a problem. I'm calling these things Easter eggs that I keep uncovering, maybe rotten Easter eggs from previous administrations that I keep uncovering and finding and it's not fun. Long story longer, the new utility poles that were installed along Forest Avenue as a result of 114 Forest, PICO hired a contractor to come in and install some new utility poles along that block and then transfer, transfer the utilities from one pole to the next. In doing so, PICO's consultant, electrical consultant, found an illegal connection that is feeding the borough's light circuits on Forest Avenue. So they called PICO and were like, hey, we don't have any of this on your, your, your poll list. So what are we supposed to do with this? And PICO was like, I don't have any record of this, don't connect it. So they didn't connect it and they, they left. So that resulted in half of the block of Forest Avenue not being illuminated. And if you're interested in conducting some field trips, I know it's a little too late for all of us to meet out there tonight. But when it's daylight, you can go down to right outside of Danny's guitar shop and look at the old pole and just look up like this and you'll actually see the two wires just hanging there like that that come out of a conduit. That conduit then feeds one of many electrical circuits downtown. That's the problem. That's the problem we've been trying to figure out. And it's to the point where thankfully our borough engineer and the electric, Eric Johnson and Panoni's electrical design engineer have gotten to a point where I believe that we have, we have to a point where we can have a conversation about where this is going to go to rectify this situation. I didn't want to bring it to council until I knew specifics like estimated cost. We, we looked at as many alternatives as we could to minimize the disruption of downtown. The issue is this. They are streetlights. Since they are streetlights, we have one of two options. PICO says, okay, look, they're streetlights, we can put them on a streetlight circuit. It's great. They don't need to be metered. You get a different rate. However, in our field view, we realize that each one of the light standards downtown also has a receptacle attached to it. Because it has a receptacle attached to it, it cannot go on a streetlight circuit. Additionally, the tree pit receptacles are on those same circuits. Therefore, we, we, PICO will not allow this to be put on a streetlight circuit without all of those receptacles being removed. It becomes cost prohibitive, right? So we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. We have to now, since we, we, we can't have this on a streetlight circuit, we now have to have each one of these circuits metered. So I know you're probably thinking, oh, my God, exactly. This is where I went. Seeing all of these individual meters on eight different points downtown, that's not the look and feel that any of us want for Narbor. And so that, I, I took that idea and took it to Panoni and we worked on a plan. I should say they worked on the plan to minimize the number of meter locations. I think we're at three meter locations by combining and consolidating circuitry, which we're going to be benefiting from the LED streetlight project in that our voltage and amperage is going to be going down because of that, which is a good thing for this project. We, the borough, needs to significantly invest in a large sum of money to correct a problem that has been there since the beginning of the streetscape project. We have been getting free electricity since that. Estimates right now are $80,000. Estimates right now are $80,000. And these are 80, this is $80,000 of unbudgeted money. And so I wanted to bring this up tonight to just start this conversation with council. I don't need necessarily any detailed conversation tonight. You're gonna be hearing more from me and Eric in the near future about this. Now that we have a rough estimate of what it's going to cost and we're, this plan, if you're interested in knowing the nuts and bolts about that, you know, I could have Eric come at a future meeting and, um, uh, present that for you. But it minimizes the disruption to downtown. It minimizes the, uh, replacement of wire. We don't want it to be a, we want to minimize the disruption to downtown businesses. We don't want to excavate as much as we can. Because when you start excavating, that just increases the costs. And if you know anything about the utilities downtown, there are a slew of them underground and you never know what you're going to run into. And so we don't want to, um, go down that path as much as we can. So now that we have a, a potential cost, we kind of, we, we know that we can start pursuing some, um, funding opportunities. Start asking our state rep, state senator, go to Pico, see if there are any, uh, funds available for emergency repair type funding. So that's the point that we're at. Council needs to know this. Um, you'll be hearing from me in more detail coming up soon. Any questions?
Questions, council members? Mayor Dwight?
So I'm on that street. That's where, that's obviously where my store is. And, um, I, Danny Gold is, is super upset about it. And, uh, he just, uh, because it's dark down, down, uh, after, after dusk. It starts and, uh, he really feels it's a safety issue in the downtown. Um, that it, you can't really see where you're walking. It's just dark. Um, so he has impressed upon me a, a real, concern that it is a safety issue with it, it's been dark down there. And he would like to, he and I would like to get it resolved as quickly as possible.
Thanks. Matt and I, Matt and I discussed the potential for some kind of mitigation. Doesn't seem like there really is one, other than, you know, installing gas powered generator lights on the side of the road. Nobody, that's not gonna make it better, right? So, but you.
Recommendation.
Yeah, um, you do have to your advantage that days are going to be getting longer every day. And this will be resolved before they start getting shorter again.
So here's a wild, um, idea, but, and thanks to Michelle actually raised it. How about solar lights?
That was if there were six on Forest. This is the entire downtown. There's no way to even think about that.
Here's the question. We're about to replace these with LEDs, right? So the demand, you know, the electricity demand is about to go way, way down. Is it actually possible to, to run them off of solar? You know, if we wired them into some sort of, you know, solar panels, I mean, is that? I mean, given that we're talking about 80K to fix it, I mean, if we, you know, if it were cheaper, we just do it. But that's starting to be enough money that we ought to look into something creative like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I could ask the electrical designer to look at that. While the LED, right, there are other factors. There are receptacles also on that circuit. It's not just streetlights. And, you know, yeah, I'll, I, I can run that by the electrical designer. It's, it's gonna be expensive regardless which solution we go down, we, we choose.
Definitely worth an ask to see if that's a new option, right?
Indeed. And, um, to the mayor's point, you know, I spent maybe about an hour talking to Mr. Gold, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Went down to his shop and explained it to him, showed him it, and he, he was, you know, everybody's annoyed about it. I'm equally annoyed about it too, but he understands that this is, you know, we've got a bureaucracy that I've asked, look, you know, could you just connect it, reconnect it? You know, we're good for it. We're working on a solution. And they're like, sorry, now that we know about it, we're not allowed to do that. It's governed by the PUC.
I ask you one question, Matt. I had this question because I was just listening to the infrastructure meeting. Is, is a significant part of the cost of this reducing and moving the number of connection points for the meters? Or is it going, is that, is that adding a lot of cost? Or is it like, look, even if you took the five to seven connection points and stuck meters on them, ugly as it though may be, it would cost just 60,000 anyways. So don't worry about it. Uh, what, can you give me a sense of that? Thanks.
Yep. So this plan is to minimize rewiring, right? It's gonna cost a lot to make sense of where we're at and to actually wire it to a location that we can combine enough circuits to make it feasible. We don't want to replace all of the existing wire because that would then become way cost prohibitive. And so this plan uses as much of the existing infrastructure as possible, minimizes the disruption downtown and consolidates as many of those points into the fewest amount of, um, meter locations for aesthetic purposes.
But if we sacrificed aesthetics, we would be, we wouldn't be saving a significant amount of money. That's, that's, that was a liberal question.
I don't believe so. I can check, but I don't believe.
You might save 20%, but you're not gonna save 50%.
Okay.
Right.
So there's, Fred, there's another issue that we were talking about in the, in the infrastructure committee, which is, is it worth tracking down the original contractor? I mean, I think the opinion of, um, Eric Johnson and, uh, John Walker was that, yeah, the solicitor, it was that legally, there's probably not much we can do. I mean, I, I wonder if it's worth trying to find out and seeing if they'll help make it right anyway. I mean, I don't know. If it's somebody we do business with currently, I mean, they might feel obligated to, uh, to help us out in this. So the problem is that, um, we don't have that, those documents. There, there's somewhere, you know, in our, in our files. So.
The county might have them. They were, it was grant funded, if that's, if we're talking about that era.
The streetscape program? I mean, so is it, is it worth our time to, is it worth borough staff's time, Matt's time really, I mean, honestly, to, to track this down? What, what does everybody, I mean, what, what do we all think about this? Should we try to track down the original document or not?
Um, Matt, are these the improvements that were made in 2001, 2002?
Yes.
Um, I don't know. If you want, I can call, I would call, I'll call the county for you and see if they have it. If you want that kind of assistance, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Sure.
I'll take any assistance at this point. Okay.
So, can't hurt, but I think the odds are gonna, you know, it's gonna be an uphill battle. Um, it's unlikely that it's a current sort of regular customer of the borough. But it never hurts to ask. Okay. Um, any other questions on streetlights? Let's move on to, uh, 9A. Back to you, Mr. Bush.
Yeah, so a lot of our, all of our infrastructure, uh, discussion was on this very issue. We also, uh, talked a lot about, uh, the current, uh, snow removal, um, which has been taking up a large amount of, um, borough staff's time and they've basically been doing a great job keeping the streets and sidewalks clear. But it's limited their ability to, to, to work on other projects, um, since the sky keeps dumping snow. Um, we also talked about, uh, the, uh, upcoming paving project. So we're, we're going back to annual road repaving. And, um, Matt and Eric have been working to, uh, set up, you know, set, set up a, uh, this, this year's project. So Matt, I don't know if you want to talk about that now?
Yeah, sure. So, um, we have a tentative, uh, it's on the tentative, uh, March 17th agenda, um, for council to, uh, advertise the bid for the 2021 road repaving, uh, program. Um, right now we are using the road pavement improvement plan that I presented last, whenever, um, using the, uh, these, the, the worst road, which is the 200 block of Dudley Avenue. In that, we looked at, um, curbs and ADA ramps. And we had an estimate that came in under the $100,000, um, budget. And so what we're going to do is look at the next two blocks of Dudley, which rank in the next level, uh, of worst roads and see if we can get an economy of scale there. And we're going to bid it out for three blocks and hoping that the bids come back in favorable. Yeah, we're gonna do two blocks and then add alternate for three. And Eric will explain this in much better detail next, in, in two weeks. In, in the hopes that the, you know, this year's bid cycle is favorable and we might be able to get three blocks instead of two. And so that will be on the agenda for advertisement, to approve advertisement of, uh, the bid process in two weeks.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Bush?
Um, no, that's it for infrastructure.
All right. Finance, council records?
Uh, nothing new to report. We haven't met since last time we reported out. I do somewhat have an infrastructure, um, question, though, that I suppose bridges on FNA. As businesses begin to take advantage of, um, that grant and, and the, the matching grant with the NDA. And let's say they build structures, um, like we see outside of the Greeks. I don't know if this is a question may, maybe for you, Matt. Who is able to reassess whether or not once there is a structure built, we still need the, um, water barriers?
Oh, I would imagine, uh, it would be the engineer, traffic engineer.
Is, well, the traffic engineer for the, we didn't. Okay.
Talking about the barriers in the street?
Yeah, to create like the parklets. That wasn't the traffic engineer that approved that.
So don't those structures utilize the water fill barriers?
No, because they're being repli, when they're being replaced with a, with a built structure. I can email the office. I'm sorry. As Fred, as you're talking about it, I was thinking, you know, this is something that somebody asked me a question.
Do the business owners want those removed? I mean, they might want them for safety to stay out.
No, I think for the built environment now, it's, it seems duplicative.
Why don't we, why don't we take this, take this off line?
Okay. I, I don't have anything updated to.
Public health and safety, Councilman Gravy.
Okay, so we just met before this meeting. And, um, so EAC has recommended that we join ICLI. This is something that the office can do. Uh, the office staff, including Edit, are, uh, working toward the EV station installation, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And we also endorsed as a committee the, um, recommendation to print postcards that were produced by the Civic for recycling. So this has already been worked up, you know, I mean, we have the, we have the text. So those are some things that we're recommending. And, Shade Tree sent us a memo asking for a opt-in option on the use and occupancy form. I, uh, when houses turn over so that new owners can identify themselves that as, you know, willing to have a new tree planted. So that's like an easy kind of administrative thing that Shade Tree figured out with our, this, our solicitor. And of course it's optional. Uh, this would be a great benefit to Shade Tree because they're looking for planting sites. So that's something we also report.
Is there anyone opposed to, uh, asking the office to add that to the form? So, simple enough.
Um, so next item is that, is the nuisance ordinance with regard to dog barking. And we do have a nuisance ordinance already. And our solicitor reviewed the ordinance and did some research for us because we've had complaints about dog barking coming to our committee. And so this solicitor has recommended a slight amendment to the current, uh, nuisance code to strengthen this, this part of it. But he is not recommending any, any timeframes or any timeline, time limits. So the committee has endorsed the solicitor's recommendation to amend the nuisance code. And I have, um, shared that with the council. It's a memo from the solicitor. Um.
So is the plan for that to appear on the agenda at the business meeting? That amendment?
Uh, yeah, Matt, do you think that's feasible? I guess I can.
Sorry, it caught me mid, uh, mid break. Um, I think it would be a motion to advertise since it's gonna be an ordinance. So that would, yep.
Okay, yep. Um, there may be, uh, some other ordinances coming in April. And I don't know if it's more cost effective if we just sort of put them all together, um, in terms of the advertisement. Not, because it, it sounds to me like this isn't an area where sort of we don't act right now, we're going to have a problem.
That would be fine.
Okay.
And I, just so you know, I mean, we did receive, um, several emails from residents on this question. And there were several people opposed to the timeframes. Specific timeframes, like no barking between midnight and six, or no barking in excess of 15 minutes. And so what we're endorsing as a committee represents kind of a middle ground where we take what we have and strengthen it a little bit in the eyes of the solicitor. But we're not adding timeframes.
Okay. Rob, can I ask? I had neighbors catch me. They were really upset because they received a flyer that they claimed was on, um, a borough letterhead or appeared to be an official borough, um, publication explaining that because they were in a twin, they felt like they were being targeted. I did confirm that no one from the office or public health and safety sent out any type of flyer to individuals.
No, that was.
I, I received, I received the same letter. I shared it with Rob. It was not on Borough Letterhead and it was signed by the resident who dropped it off.
Yeah, that was distributed by a resident. And at the very bottom, I think the committee members' emails were listed, you know?
It was CC'd.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that was not coming from the committee.
I would, I actually would say that I actually received more. The, the resident was asking their neighbors to rally around a particular issue. And I received more negative emails, like against the issue the resident was requesting then. And, um, those favorable, although there were, um, the, the request made a lot of sense to me that we strengthen the noise ordinance. So it was just something to note. But our, but our, um, I also just wanted to add, Rob, that, you know, if, if a resident has an issue with noise, the first thing to do is to call 911 and request that the police come because the police do that all the time. That was something I learned from this discussion we had. They respond really regularly to noise complaints and they're, and they're perfectly willing to do that. And that's their job. And it's an important, it's an important way to get resolution. And, um, it's just, I didn't know they did it all the time. I thought that, that complaints about animals were far and few between. But they're not.
Okay. Okay, just a couple of other things. And so we also discussed the price crossing, uh, bollard problem. You know, it's a collapsible bollard there that has been run over at least once. And, um, it was intended for that to be an emergency access only. And so Matt, Matt has explained that Republic cannot collect the trash, um, without putting that bollard down. You know, as, so there's a problem there and Matt has a solution. But I think we, we would need the whole council to take some action, you know, uh, to support the solution. The solution proposed is to allow Republic access um, for the rest of the trash contract. Because, you know, and then in the next trash contract, it would be part of that negotiation, this particular access road.
I would be loath to increase our costs for trash hauling overall so that one side road doesn't have to be accessed two days a week. You know, when you go from a larger truck to a smaller truck, which would solve that problem. You know, your costs for the borough could go up 10 to 20%. But, but, uh, you know, to the point, you know, this is an area that is frustrating because the developer, um, built that access road for emergency vehicles only. And now, um, you know, that development is, it's a public, it's done. The escrows are all released and we find out that they can't pick up trash, which is a, a health and safety concern, which is why it came to your committee, right? We don't want to create precedent where, um, we sort of let people off the hook, but at the same time, we can't have the trash piling up. I don't know. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, I, I am in favor of, I'm presenting this solution. Since there was an overlap of the project getting completed and the trash contract. And we didn't know about the intricacies of the, these turning movements prior to the issuance of the trash contract. And to your point, Mr. President, yes, it would be, you know, cost prohibitive for us to have Republic change out the truck just for this one, um, pickup location. So I'm suggesting that, um, council approve an amendment to this use. So I'm suggesting that council approve an amendment to this use to allow the use of the access road for trash, weekly trash collection through the conclusion of this current trash contract. And then we can include that and bake that into the next bid proposal. As, as, as a function of a trash bid, the awardee is, you know, usually spends about a day or half a day with the Director of Public Works navigating all of the streets, all the intricacies, and they identify what types of trucks they need. And we can actually put those restrictions into that bid contract at that time. It's just, you know, we're halfway through our current contract. We've just about got a year and a half left. And I see Mr. Baum has, uh, he, he's here and he's, uh, withstood the lengthy meeting thus far. And he, he represents the Homeowners Association of Price Crossing. I appreciate his patience throughout all of this and bringing this issue to light. I'd like to thank the residents of that block of Conway also from, with their patience. I think this is a good solution. One of the things that I'm recommending is that council take action since this is a function of a formerly adopted land development plan that signified that this was only to be used as an emergency access. I know Mr. Baum has asked for documentation defining that since it wasn't explicitly on a final plan. I am confident and the borough solicitor and engineer are confident that we have enough background documentation with review letters and planning commission recommendations and approvals that signify that it is only to be used for pedestrian access and emergency vehicle access. Now forward those documents over to Mr. Baum so they have those and for their records. So I am suggesting that council actually take formal action at the March 17th business meeting. I'll work with the solicitor. I don't know if it'll just need to be a motion or a resolution. I'll defer to the solicitor's opinion on that, just to document that we are, that council is approving this temporary usage for trash through the end of the contract.
Mr. Baum, is there anything you'd like to add? You've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the borough's assistance in trying to figure this out. The situation is certainly not one that the nine homeowners in the association knew to even consider as a part of buying our properties. We, we would, I similarly would be concerned that the borough might incur future costs just to service our one property with respect to future trash contracts. So I would wonder if the borough would work with us on what an alternative resolution in the future might look like. One of the other residents of Price Crossing raised, you know, would installing speed bumps on the access road to mitigate traffic that would come through at, you know, lower speeds be, uh, be, uh, something that the borough wouldn't consider, or might there be other options as well? But again, we're representing our association, happy to do whatever makes the most sense for all parties involved.
Okay, thank you. I know that the engineers will be looking at it and, you know, over time we'll come up with something, Bob. You're on mute, sir.
I feel the, the need to make a comment to my fellow council members at this moment because the, the moment will pass. But the, the, it was the intention of the council when we approved that development, preliminary development scheme, and then, you know, through all of the development plans, that, that it was in the interests of the residents who live on Conway that that not become a driveway or a roadway onto Conway mid-block. It, it, it's, it's adjacent to an existing residence driveway. And I just, I just, it concerns me that there, that there sort of will be an incremental use creep if we allow sort of like, if we start to make it like a sort of a regular right of way for vehicles. The intention was always just that it be a pedestrian walkway through. That's why it's paved differently. It should never be paved any differently. Those were all part of the conditional, you know, the conditional use approvals. This is all in the interests of the neighbors who live on Conway, who were very upset with the additional road, you know, sort of accessway being placed there. So I just wanted to say that just for the record. Historically, I think also in future land use developments, we have to be really, really extra careful about what we're approving and asking these questions. And I, I mean, I think this council is really conscientious about those things, but we've got to, we have to double check and double check with the engineers that when they say the trucks can really turn around, they can really turn around. Because that was, you know, that was promised to us by this developer, that trucks could turn around there. And now this, this could potentially cost money in the out years. I do remember the conversation about the Ballard. And one of the firemen, I think it might have been you, Aaron, said, "Don't worry about giving the fireman keys to the Ballard. We will get through it. It doesn't, it doesn't matter whether it's locked or what kind of Ballard it is." And I do even wonder if the homeowners association might just simply save money and not having it plowed. Because plowing that little pedestrian access, you know, I mean, certainly shoveling a walkway, but I don't know that it needs to be, the Ballard needs to be lowered for a plow. I'm not sure, Aaron, if that's something firemen need, but.
We'd have to check with the chief, but, um, but it may not be, you know.
In any case, I think you all see the point I'm making. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, Aaron, that this, it's clearly an issue that, you know, the present setup is not working. And for the neighbors or for the homeowners, it seems in price. And so, uh, because there are also complaints from neighbors, you know, about Amazon trucks, uh, delivery trucks using this access point. So, uh, you know, I, I think Matt is suggesting that we have a year and a half remaining in this trash contract. So before the next trash contract, if we could have some solution.
Yeah, reiterate, you know, the borough, you know, I, I. In support of restricting that access road to emergency vehicles only, the only exception being trash. And that's why I'm encouraging council to consider taking action in two weeks to define that. Mr. Weissboard's point, I didn't want this to be a Matt West decision or an Ed Harmon decision. This needs to be a council decision and it's different than what was approved. So I want that record. I want that paper trail to define what is allowed and what isn't allowed. And that's different. It's not what's been past practice. So trying to change that and trying to create a really good, sound, enforceable record.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else, public health and safety?
There's just one other thing. So we, we have the road sign review process that Matt is engaged in with the traffic engineer and that'll take place in the infrastructure meeting. Fred, that's my understanding, that it'll be more in your committee with the next meeting. And the MOU is moving ahead with Laura Marion and the chief is meeting with them tomorrow. And then the common interest agreement with Philadelphia. I think you saw the solicitor's email about that.
Yep, that's moving forward as well. Thank you. All right, now we move to public comment. If a member of the public would like to comment, we have three minutes. It is a, you, you let us know and we'll follow up with you after the meeting in terms of answers. I think Marine is here. I think Evan has spoken. Mr. Winston, do you have a public comment? Uh, no, okay. Carol Marie Scanlon.
Hello, council. I trust that you received the petition from the 200 block of Sabine Avenue regarding our request for an expedited review of the effectiveness of the one-way signs. And I think it's particularly timely to have it done because as the weather is warming, more and more children are coming to the park. We've had several incidents of cars that are just whizzing down the street, happily not realizing they're going the wrong way with children running across the street. And in our petition, when I was speaking with our neighbors, the, several of the older neighbors concur that there were other one-way signs of I, as I've been saying over the years, that have gone missing. There were four other one-way signs. And I think it's really important that they, given the, the information that I gave you all on the street elevations, on the sightlines, it is really important that we get those one-way signs replaced. Because as I said in, in our petition, when we stop people, 95% of them say, "I had no idea, there's no signs." It's less people cutting through the street, as was suggested the last council meeting, perhaps was people cutting through the street. It's really not people cutting through the street. It's people that just miss the signs. And you say, "How can you miss the signs?" Easy, it's really not hard to miss these signs. So that's my request is an expedited review of the, the safety on our street and replacing the one-way signs that have gone missing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will close public comment. Any announcements?
So, okay. I, I had suggested new business. I don't know if, if you want that now, Aaron, or if, uh, if that's an appropriate.
Sure, now's a good time because the next motion is adjournment, so.
Okay, so Planning Commission is working on the SALDO. I know that Montgomery County is, is working with them on the SALDO. It's going to be brought back to us in the next couple of months. And in a conversation with John Walco, I had a, I learned about an option for the SALDO that, you know, we don't currently have. I don't think it's being considered and I'd like to see if there's general interest in council from, you know, to pursue this idea. It is for, as part of the land development process, a municipality can require a developer to dedicate land to the municipality for park and recreation purposes. This is a, it's called public dedication. And we have established in our comprehensive plan and in our open space plan that Norbert needs more parks, Norbert needs more open space. And as a result, that's sort of the legal homework, or that's the homework we need to do to institute such a policy. What it can look like is either a developer can put in some sort of, you know, green space or public space for their residents. Or if they feel like, well, the property is too small, it's not appropriate, they can make a contribution to the borough, which the borough would then use for parks and open space that would be reachable by those, usable by those residents. So there'd be in a, like a dedicated account that would go toward the nearest park, basically, or, or would allow the borough to acquire more open space near that development. So I just want to see what the, what the sense of council is on this, whether I should pursue it with EAC and, and see, you know, try to get this into a form that we can get it into the SALDO revision.
Fred, you and I discussed it. I thought it was a great idea. I'm not seeing any nods side to side, so.
It is great. I mean, there's pretty much standard SALDO language that we can.
Yeah, there are a lot, there are a lot of municipalities in Pennsylvania that have this.
Yeah.
It's not everybody, it's certainly fairly common. Okay, so I will, I will talk to EAC and there need to be some language about exactly, you know, there would need to be some language figured out about exactly how much the contribution would be. It's usually based on how many dwelling units you have. You owe so much space or so much of a fee based on how much space costs in Norbert. Okay, so we'll work on that. The other thing that I just learned today that municipalities can do, we could potentially limit fossil fuel hookups for new development. We could say new development should be electric and it should not be a fuel oil hookup or a natural gas hookup for a furnace. So be in line with our climate action plan, which envisions 100% clean energy. I wasn't actually aware that we had this ability, but some state senators in Pennsylvania are trying to stop municipalities from doing this. So apparently, we have the ability to say, um, to put a limit on fossil fuel hookups on new development. So I thought I'd take the temperature and see if this is something that we should also look into. It would fit in with, so our climate plan identifies like heating on property, you know, residential and commercial properties is a major source of climate emissions. And this would be a way to influence that. You know, it's a lot easier to get clean electricity than it is to get clean natural gas or clean fuel oil for that matter.
Yeah, I, I like that, Fred. I, I know some other towns have done that.
It's, it's common in California. We would, you know, it hasn't been done in Pennsylvania as far as I'm aware, but.
I think it is, and I think we could look at it. I don't know that anybody is putting in fuel oil at this point.
Yeah, it's mostly.
Just sort of economically, so. But when it comes to natural gas, it is possible to purchase reclaimed landfill gas. And so I would, you know, personally wonder whether that, you know, sort of limiting that is the right move if there are market options which sort of achieve the same goal, especially given the efficiencies and cost, uh, cost efficiencies of doing so. There's a significant difference in cost to heating your home with even the, the reclaimed gas versus electricity.
I mean, I, I think the, uh, the counter argument would be that we can't ensure that people are using the reclaimed gas.
That's, you're actually right. It's a question of, a question of how far should this government reach? But maybe it's worth finding out more and then we can have that conversation and, you know, make a political decision.
Okay, so you're good with me investigating this further and bringing it back?
Uh, Mr. West, I believe the solicitor's in the waiting room and I'll take a motion, hearing no other new business. Actually, before I make that motion, I do have an announcement, which is I have received a letter of resignation from our interim manager, Mr. West. It is my understanding that he has accepted a position as the manager in New Britain Township. Congratulations, Mr. West. We will be very sad to see you leave. My understanding also is that your last day is April 23rd. And we thank you for staying with us and helping us to make a smooth transition. Your, uh, your time in the, in the captain's chair has been brief, but I can say personally, I have enjoyed it and will be sad to see you go. But wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. I know it's bittersweet. I've got a lot of blood, sweat and tears in Norbert and love the town. It's just, um, an opportunity came up and it's a great fit for me and it's 15 minutes from my home and bigger municipality. It's just all these, like, all the perfect things happened all at once. So it's been great working with you all. It's been a lot of fun. I've enjoyed being in the captain's chair the past three months. And, um, yeah, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion and congratulations, Matt, on your new job. Well deserved. I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Does the second contain the requisite congratulations to Mr. West?
Congratulations, Matt.
If it does, then all in favor? Aye, the meeting is adjourned. We will take 120 seconds and then meet in executive session.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you.